Yes.
Are all of our mics on?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good here. All right, I call the meeting to order. Let's start with a pledge and a prayer and then we'll call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is safe. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for allowing us to gather up. We thank you for health and strength. Lord, we thank for this board. We thank for our community. Thank for our school system. Lord, we thank you that for these kids, Lord, they're so special to us and are a bright squad in our day. And Lord, we ask that you would lead, guide, and direct during this meeting and that all things would be accordance as I will. We love you because you did first love us. We ask all these things in your precious holy name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order. First thing I think I would like to announce, we have two members that are out of town and they are online. So I'm going to read something for mainly their benefit so that they'll understand they are on a public record. So I'm reading part of this, okay? The chair should remind all members that all chats, instant messages, texts, or other written communication between members of the board regarding the transaction of board business during the meeting, including such communication between or among members participating remotely for a public record. If that person or persons cannot be seen physically by other members of the board and members of the public present at the meeting, the remote participants must identify themselves at each of the following situations: When the meeting begins or a role is taken and prior to participating in the deliberations, including making motions, proposing amendments, and raising points of order, and prior to voting. So if you would, please identify who you are.
I'm Kim Carpenter and I'm attending this meeting remotely via phone.
And I'm Travis Hight. I'm also attending remotely. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Let's go to move to the main agenda and additions.
At this time, Mr. Sale, I believe we had some folks here that would like to make a public comment. So before we approve the agenda, so that they're not having to sit through the whole thing, if we could move, it looks like section four, public comment, to just after, just before discussion items. Allow them a moment to speak before we get started.
I'll make that motion. Have a second. All those in favor, by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those members need to...
Aye.
All right.
I'm Carpenter.
All right. And before we get to that, let's see the consent agenda, mask approval, and May 9th minutes. Any changes to that?
No.
If so, do we have approval of the consent agenda or will we have that up later? All right.
Yes.
All right. Anyone that wants to speak publicly, we have that signed up yet? Okay, Ms. Pearlene Allen, if you would step up there and let me remind you that we'll have a time where you have three minutes and we don't respond to it, but we will listen to your comments and then that's it. Thank you.
And of course, I'm a Lone Ranger, usually. I'm Pearlene Allen, a graduate of Swain County High School, class of 1962. I have three children that have graduated from Swain High and also grandchildren. I have a concern worrying on my heart and soul about the school system. Dear Lord, my heavenly Father, I come to you in the name of Jesus. Control my tongue, guide me, Lord, that I would say what you'd have me say and it would be received in the manner that you would have it received. Amen. I understand there is a club in the school system on school campus having nothing to do with our school curriculum at all called the Jigsaw Club. I have been told by a member of the board, you're just trying to keep them from committing suicide. If this be the truth, why is this matter not being handled by a trained professional of school property? Rather than I've been told, the person with them, don't even comment. From what I was told by this board member, it is just to gather in for them to talk, which I consider feeding off of each other's ideas and feelings. Down deep in their God-created nature, they know this is not right. That is why they are so troubled, and I'm very troubled about it. We have taken God in prayer out of our schools because it may offend someone. Have you ever considered this may be offensive to the majority of the student body as well to us taxpayers supporting the system which is having a club that has nothing to do with the curriculum on our campuses? If there is one true Christian among us and we do not lead them to the truth, their demise and destination will be on our hands at the end. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go into the discussion items. Mr. Sale.
Each week or each month, excuse me, that we've met, I think nearly since January, we've tried to bring a part of our school system in and recognize the hard work that they accomplished for us. And there's one group that I don't want to say that we have neglected, but they haven't been brought forth yet. And that's because truly they would prefer to not be put on stage in any way. And that's our workers in the central office staff. That would include Ms. Tredway and Ms. Heron and Ms. Cook and who are you, Dr. Sutton? And, help me. Ms. Turbefield. Yes. And Mr. Dills. And there are others who are not with us tonight. They work tirelessly and under a tremendous amount of strain. But there's another group that we really need to pay attention to, and those are the ones who work around them. And that includes, my brain is not working. Would you please? Because my face is flushing and I can feel it.
So in the finance department, we have Joanne Norton, who's also our clerk to the board. We have Sherri Wright, who's our payroll coordinator. And we have Marlena Clure, who's the finance assistant that also does purchasing and a tremendous amount of other things. And that's the finance department.
But they're not the only ones. Michelle, who is your assistant, please?
Ms. Debbie Sutton is my assistant and she does so much for me. She's helped me get through this beginning stages of this new endeavor that I've taken on. I couldn't do it without her.
Ms. Cook, who works with you, please?
I want to recognize Brandon Messer. He's the one engineer for the district and I just, I really don't think we could do what we do without his expertise.
Absolutely. Dr. Sutton, you've brought somebody on, but there are others who are helping you as well, and who are they?
Tommy and I share. So Lisa Waldrop is joining me with Student Services. Deb Smith handles my Medicaid billing and my purchase orders for all of the programs I oversee.
She handles purchase orders and scheduling and things like that for me, this Deb does. She's been integral to everything that I've done since I've gotten there. She helps me schedule interviews, which we might have one or two every now and again for getting people employed. And then Lavonda Woodring is our licensure specialist. We were lucky enough to be able to steal her from Jackson County a few years ago and she has been a godsend to me because she knows so much about the licensure and takes a lot of the stuff that is, that puts me sitting on hold for 40 minutes talking to DPI off my desk. And I can leave that to her and she takes care of it and she does a great job for me. We're very grateful to have both of those ladies working with us.
And back here in the back corner, who I couldn't see with the eyes in the back of my head, is Toby Burrow. And Toby, you're going to hear from him in a little while. He takes cares of so many different things. And Toby has had several assistants come through and work with him, but right now, we're pleased to have Kevin Allman, who is probably way overqualified for the job that we ask him to do, but he does it very well. Toby, forgive me for not getting you just a few minutes ago. Evan Clap saddle couldn't be here tonight. He's taking care of his son at home. He sent me a text and said that Ross had been there since 5:00 a.m. this morning by himself. That's not child abuse. Ross is old enough to handle it, I think. And then Jody Marr is not here with us tonight as well, and she takes care of testing and accountability and other things. Have I missed anyone in central office? Kim Donaldson. How can I miss Kim? Because without Kim, Evan wouldn't be able to function. It's, she runs all of our after-school programs and is an incredibly valuable resource. Anybody else?
I'm just going to mention one more thing. I know I've been updating you on our immune, color immune implementation for our finance software. And so I'd also like to mention that both the HR and finance staff,
Yes.
we try to culminate all the hours that have went into that project. And to date, there's been over 1,200 hours that has been put in by both teams in our central office for that project. And that's over and above their normal job duties. Just want to highlight them one more time. Thank you.
And it's not done yet?
It's not done.
No, it probably will never be done. No, I'm just kidding. This team, I know that our teachers work hard, I know that our teacher assistants, everybody in the county works hard. But I don't believe that people really understand the number of hours and the intensity that it takes to run the central office. And these folks are the most professional group that you'll find anywhere. And a warning to any school system around us, hands off, because we're not going to part with them in any way. So we want to say thank you to all of you tonight. We appreciate you so deeply. And we would ask you to clap for yourself, but that would feel kind of weird, wouldn't it? And we'll have ice cream sundaes on Thursday, okay, to celebrate, all right? Two o'clock, come and join us. All right. That's my presentation. That pretty much brings almost everyone from the school system through here in some way or the other. And we'll start again next year.
You know, sadly, even with this, we don't do enough to thank the folks we have. And I know we sit, Ed Daly, and we're just so grateful that we've got the people we've got. And I'm not going to start naming names because I'd be here a while, but I see it firsthand and we are so fortunate. I mean, I know people that could leave here today and with another job, so
Yes.
we're fortunate to have them. We appreciate them. And it's for kids.
It is. With that, I would like to bring Tim Kerr up. He is our final representative from our campuses to talk about the amazing things that all of our schools are doing. Tim has served as principal there for three years. Is that correct? Three years? Yes. So Tim, come and brag on the middle school for a minute, please.
Okay. I'll send y'all an email.
Great, thanks.
All right. How's everybody doing today? Good. So I want to start with the biggest piece of news that we received this year. And that is that we received the distinction of being a leader-in-me school or a lighthouse school, excuse me. This is something that has been a years-long process, started back in 2016 when we decided to take this journey on this road to lighthouse status. This year, we determined even despite being in the middle of COVID, that we were going to go ahead and shoot for it. So that meant that we spent hours and hours creating an evidence binder. It meant that we had to coordinate with the lighthouse visit team. Lighthouse group came in, they spent a day at our school, they saw what all was going on. And ultimately, they had great things to say. They were very impressed with what was going on at Swain Middle School. We, I asked our coach, Diane Vance, she said, "We are the ninth middle school in North Carolina to receive this distinction." And there are, I looked it up today, there are, including charter schools, there are 741 middle schools in the state of North Carolina. So that's pretty good odds, pretty good percentage. I wanted to give a huge shout out to our lighthouse team who put forth untold hours. And especially Jessica Klein and Tim Sale, they are the chairs of the lighthouse team and they were invaluable for putting everything together and making sure that we could get this. Now, what does it actually mean beyond the fact that we can celebrate and broadcast this to people that we are trying to get employed in our school system? There are teachers out there that actually try to go to schools that are leader-in-me schools, lighthouse schools, so that in a teacher shortage is certainly something that we can use to our advantage. Also, it gives us the opportunity to have many schools throughout the southeast, not just North Carolina, but throughout the southeast. Come visit us, share ideas, see what we're doing. We've had, we've had visitors over the past few years before COVID. And what I found with that was not only were we sharing ideas with them, but they were sharing ideas with us. You know, growth process continual. So we're very, very excited about getting lighthouse status. I hope to talk to the newspaper in the next few days. And then just in general, events and activities that have gone on around Swain Middle School. You know, I guess the, just the general theme or vibe is that it was good for our souls to resume activities that had become part of who we are. You know, there was these things that were ingrained in our culture that when COVID hit, we had to stop. One of them are maroon meetings. And in the first part of the year, we started doing them gradually with grade levels, but by February, March, we had begun to have our entire school come back to our gym once a week at least to play games, to deliver lessons on what it means to be a good person, leader-in-me lessons, social emotional lessons. Students getting more and more involved in those as the school went on, being more responsible for them, giving them the opportunity for student leadership. Guest speakers, you'll see one of the pictures, Allison Shod, who was the valedictorian at the high school, came and spoke to our students earlier in the year. And then on May 9th, which is why I wasn't here last time, to present to you all, we had our leadership night. And we had over 100 attendees. There were lots of family activities. Again, you can see pictures of one of the family activities. We had a race with dodgeballs being held at their necks, trying to see who could win. And we had student-led conferences, which is something that we had spent the entire year working towards with our students, you know, being aware of what their academic and personal data is. What are their academic goals? How do they want to do in reading and math? How do they want to improve on I-Ready? How do they want to improve in their grades? What do they want to do personally with their lives? You know, and it may be something as simple, one girl was on the cheerleading team and she set a goal for a push-up so that she could do the, whatever that's called when you hold the other cheerleaders up. Sherri? So she could be the base. Okay, there you go. So anyhow, the point is that they were able to showcase this with their parents that evening. So I feel like that was a big success. I feel like just the fact that we had an eighth-grade field trip to Charleston, South Carolina, and a moving up ceremony that was traditional like we had had prior to COVID, those are huge things to celebrate. I felt like we ended this school year well and with the customs and traditions that we were used to. It made me feel confident that we were getting back to normal. So those are some things. In the fall, we had an SEC Roadshow that we are quite proud of. It was the first of its kind. We partnered with Southwestern Community College. We had professors. They showcased their program, presented to our students. Our students had done career inventories ahead of time, even our sixth graders, which was the big thing. They were like, "Are you sure that you want?" But the sixth graders were the most engaged. And so they had done their career inventory and determined what are the things that they would be interested in listening to. To, basically, the goal was for them to begin visualizing their future. What are the steps that they need to take in middle school and then high school and then hopefully college or a career for them to be successful? So those are some of the events and activities we had. One of the big things about academics that I feel like we're still, it's still a growth process. We are still working to get better at it. But the professional learning community process that you've probably heard from every teacher or every principal that's come up here this year, it's been a very valuable process. We had time for teachers to collaborate, make deeper data-informed decisions. I'm going to use the example of our eighth-grade math teachers because they would use, every three weeks, they would meet, use the information from the I-Ready assessments and their classroom common assessments that they gave to determine what were the weaknesses that certain groups of students had and what were the strengths and hit those weaknesses and capitalize on those strengths and divide up the teachers to hit those. And I will say, when I look at the eighth-grade math scores, while you look at proficiency and you think, "Well, that's not real high." When you look at the growth, it's actually quite astronomical, the amount of growth those eighth-grade students showed in math. So I think it worked and I'm excited to see how it works moving forward. We had intervention time built into the day so that we could address student needs, academic needs. And while that was going on, we at the same time had an enrichment time period because every student can't get extra help in academics at the same time with small groups. So we use this time for History Day, Science Fair, school news, and debate, as well as other things. And our History Day group, we had many competitors. We had three that made it to the state History Day competition. And that was Emma Heron, Emily Grace Stargel, and Adam Shod. And they won the Vietnam-era History Award. So we were pretty excited about that. And then we have a teacher, Amber Gillum, connected to History Day. She actually won the state History Day award, so the top History Day teacher in the entire state. So lots of that stuff was going on, lots of positives. The, what you will see in terms of I-Ready and EOG scores, there is a lot to celebrate. And there's a lot of harsh realities and then information too. You know, we started the school year with our math, in math, our students, only 24% of them were even starting to be on grade level. And you look at the beginning of the school year, we had 106 students that were three or more grade levels below. That's obviously very concerning, but you can see the drastic changes that happened as the year went on. By the end of the year, we were able to make 43% of our students on grade level in math and reading had similar numbers. You know, and I think a lot of that speaks to the COVID battle that we were fighting and the deficiencies and all that. But our teachers worked tremendously hard to get our students where they got by the end of the year. The last page is just comparing, comparing our EOG scores from last year to this year, where we are, which are above the state average. So that in itself, I'm excited about. I wish they were higher, but they are above the state average. And I am hopeful and believe, based on what I've seen with EVOS, which if you don't know, that's our state predictor of how students do and how they will grow after they take EOG tests. Gives us an idea of how a student actually did. Based on that, I'm hopeful and I believe that we're going to make growth, meet expected growth for the third year in a row, the middle school. And that's a huge accomplishment. So lots of great things. I just want to end by shouting out all our staff and all our students because it was a hard year, you know? It was a year in which we started off with the realities of COVID staring us straight in the face. And our students and our staff persevered through all those difficulties. And then we started to get momentum in February and March, and by the time this year was over, we had tremendous success and tremendous achievements. And we can walk away from this school year feeling great about what we did and all the hard work we put in. So I just want to give a thank you to all of them and I appreciate your time. Do you have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to emphasize something. Kim?
Yes.
Did you say thank you or was there something else?
I was just saying thank you to Mr. Kerr for the good report.
Okay. I want to emphasize the fact that COVID has had a significant impact on where students started at the beginning of this year. And I saw some, some numbers from DPI about two weeks ago that reflect math was impacted the most. And there was greater impact the farther up the grade levels that you went, which is one of the reasons that Mr. Kerr and his staff started the year with probably more opportunity for growth than other places. And there's also another fact that we need to put onto the floor, and that is, in order to achieve proficiency in some places at the middle school, you have to achieve, you have to be at or better than 80% of the students in Swain, in North Carolina. Eighty-seven percent. Some of the numbers that are put in front of these folks to achieve are staggering, staggering. But the most important number is the fact that they're growing. And we're seeing significant growth in a lot of different areas and I'm thrilled about that. So thank you, Mr. Kerr, and to your staff for your continued work. We do appreciate that.
And I will remind you that Mr. Sale and this board are still behind a new middle school. And we're still pushing it and we're still, Mark's done a lot of work trying to keep up with it in Raleigh. And it's not over yet. We got turned down on the high school the first time.
Yes.
Didn't turn down, didn't make it, but we think we're very positive about that and we're very hopeful about that. And it's, because that would even improve it because we'll have a little bit better conditions.
I have a meeting about that next week. As a matter of fact, I think next Thursday, which should give us more information.
Good.
Dr. Sutton heads a lot of different elements of our school system. He is our chief academic officer. And one of the areas that he oversees is exceptional children. And one of the categories of exceptional children is academic and intellectually gifted. A lot of people don't put those together, but students who have academic and intellectual gifts are also exceptional. And we work to meet those exceptions for them. Dr. Sutton has worked extremely hard to put together an AIG plan that he would like to share with you. And then when we get to action items, we'll need to vote on that for approval, okay? Dr. Sutton.
Yeah, so hopefully a 62-page document was attached to your board documentation prior to this meeting for you to read through. I'm just going to hit the highlights tonight. This was a good year for me to start working with the AIG program. Rich Harvey, Sally Butler, Curtis Sox, Jessica Klein, and Cindy Thompson are the AIG coordinators for the school. Each of the schools, we have one serving both elementary. We have one for each grade level, the middle school, and then one serving all of the 912 students. They were a huge help through this, organizing parent meetings, conducting teacher and student surveys so that we could gather some data about our prior AIG plan. We have to rewrite this every three years. So this year, North Carolina had this call to action where they reviewed their AIG policy and made some updates to it. And there were six things that they looked at. One of them was reframing their lens, looking at students instead of seeing at-risk, seeing at potential, just changing the way we think about students and what they're doing in schools. Really, a huge push was equitable identification processes, ensuring that every student is considered for the AIG program. Then providing a range of services. We do some push-in, pull-out, some just tutoring-type situations through the middle school and high school where there are like counselors for this, making sure they sign up for the right classes, are pushing themselves as they need to be. Another one that we were actually strong in already was fostering talent development. Mr. Harvey has already worked with K-3 students into preparing them for the possibility of the AIG program, which we have previously started identifying in fourth grade, but we're going to work on changing that some per what the DPI is looking for. we're going to work on changing that some per what the DPI is looking for, and then collecting and using data and professional learning opportunities. So, through our feedback, through our parent, we have a AIG advisory committee, and we also sent out some surveys and for teachers, students, and parents, and the number-one thing overall was better communication. They want to see a better website, they want to see more information transitioning from fifth grade to sixth grade, what does AIG programming look like during those, but overall, more communication was, was what is needed. Wanted us to beef up our website so that some of the materials were easier to find. Opportunities, they wanted to know more about Governor's School, about the School of Math and Science, so that they were well-informed about other opportunities throughout the state and our community for students identified as AIG. Some of the referral process, parents and teachers were not aware of the referral process, and teachers were not aware of our previous three-year plan, so they really wanted to be, have more information about this upcoming three-year plan that'll go into effect if you approve it tonight. Standard one is all about student identification. We had some strong points here. We take referrals at multiple grade levels, third, fourth grade through 12th, because students can be referred at all the ti, at any time. We examine multiple data points, and we have this watch list, so if you're not quite ready to, don't quite meet the criteria this year, we keep watching and see if anything changes that you might meet next year. But some areas for improvement is the equitable access. We are going to start reviewing subgroup data. Two of interesting facts that I've come across was, well, one, one in particular was the number of students that identify, we're 60 to 65% free and reduced lunch, but only 15% of the students in the AIG program are qualified for free and reduced lunch. So, there's an area that we've got to work hard in improving, making sure that the students that are underserved are, have access to the AIG program. And again, increased communication about the process. The next one is comprehensive programming. The fact that we have coordinators at every school, multiple at the middle school, we have a four-to-three math program at the middle school so that you can earn credits in sixth, seventh, eighth grade math and Math I. That's a huge thing, that we have a dedicated elementary coordinator, and then at the high school, we offer honors, AP, and dual enrollment offerings, so that's a huge benefit to our high school students. It looks like they're working, the high school's working hard so that our students will have the opportunity to earn a two-year degree while they're attending our high school. There's a few things to iron out, but they're pretty close to doing that. Again, some of the areas of improvement are increased communication and promotion of opportunities through outside agencies, more information about dual enrollment, how, what does a student have to do to get in, enrolled in dual enrollment classes, the School of Math and Science, what is those criteria? More support for PLCs so that those professional learning communities, we can help teachers through those, better support the AIG students that are identified as AIG, and then we need to get back to our History Day, Science Olympiad, and Science Fairs. COVID has shut all those down, and so getting back to that at a large scale is something we've got to revamp. Another area was differentiated curriculum. Some of our strengths there, Swain Core, it's a process we started several years ago using the understanding by design to take out the North Carolina standards and develop units of study around those. Now, that's an ongoing effort and a thing that we can, we continue to work around. Our PLC structures and dedication to that has been a huge benefit, and then again, having AIG supported each grade span. Some areas of improvement are ensuring that our K5 and 912 AIG specialists are able to support the PLCs. And then, teachers have asked for PD specifically on differentiated instruction to help students, well, both students with disabilities and students that are working above grade level. Next area is personal and professional develop, personnel and professional development. Two of our five AIG specialists already have an AIG license, two of them are near completion, and one of them will be starting the process. She actually started the process this spring. I think another strong strength of ours is the fact that I work closely with Katrina and Evan and Special Education so that there is a flow of information between those different programs. So, I think that is a strength, and then of course, our Swain Core. One of the things we would like to work on is having a plan so that we are training and preparing future AIG coordinators, so working with Mr. Deals over the next few years to have a recruitment and retention plan of AIG coordinators. And then, another area is a stronger relationship, and when we meet with the director of school improvement, Ms. Turbyfield, that we are constantly thinking about professional learning opportunities aligned with our AIG plan. And then the last thing is our partnerships, and we have a strong relation to Gear Up. It's a hu, that's a huge benefit and a program for our county to be part of that. It gives our students many opportunities that we wouldn't be able to give them no other way. We have huge, strong parental support, the parental advisory committee for the AIG. Those parents were very involved and provided us very useful feedback so that the community support and parental support is just, it's huge for our counties. And then we also have back-to-school parent nights, which is also an area that we can do better, but because we have had those historically, that, those are a strong way for us to share information. Some things that parents had requested were a calendar of events, when, when things might be happening so they know that, when to attend. We want to include AIG information in back-to-school letters that go home at the beginning of the year, and then also a new student enrollment package, so parents have the referral process in their hand, and then maybe what AIG offerings are available at that school. We need a focused AIG parent meetings, and then increased AIG advisory meetings. I would like to see us do a minimum of a fall and a spring meeting to look at our plans for the year, and then at the, at the spring meeting to wrap up the year and see what we actually accomplished, if we set out. And then the huge thing is just communication. People want to know what's in our plan, how to, how to refer a student, what the process of referral is, how a student is identified, and what programs are available. That, that was the biggest takeaway through all the communication through teachers and parents was just more information, making sure it's readily available and easy to access. So, those are some things we're going to work on. I'm going to work on updating the AIG website this summer to align with what is approved. So, any questions, comments? It's, it's been a year-long process, and without those AIG coordinators, I would have floundered because I had to spend a great deal of time learning about AIG programming overall. So, having the call to action and the state revamping its policy was, was actually, it was a good time for me to come in because there was a lot of webinars and PD for me to learn about AIG.
I did read that. It proved to me that I wouldn't be qualified for that program after I got through it. It's a good program.
Yeah, it is good program, and we, we are fortunate to have what we have, and we are looking at potentially adding another AIG coordinator for the elementary schools. I think it'll be a good thing so we can really focus in on some of that talent development and programming, so I'm looking forward to that. I know that Cindy Thompson's role is changing a little bit at the high school, so that's going to maybe free her up to do a little bit more advising and making sure that students are taking the courses that best fit their career path or aspirations. So, I'm excited about some of those changes this upcoming year.
You know, we don't talk about it. I mean, I guess parents know this or assume they know it, but there's a cost savings for these kids and parents when they get through and graduate from the high school, some of these classes they took.
Oh, yes.
They're not paying college tuition to take them. So, I mean, it's, and it's, for some of them, it'd be sizable amount because they come out with a lot of degrees.
Don't ask? Okay. I was going to ask Barbara how much because we, we calculated that this year, and it's, it's tens of thousands of dollars. It's significant, you're right.
But, I mean, that's never talked about, but it's a fact.
I know personally, my daughter is finishing up, just finished up her freshman year, and the dual enrollment courses are something that she's excited about. She has long-term career goals that's going to require an extensive amount of college, so if we're able to save her a year or two by her doubling up in high school, it will have a huge benefit for her long-term. So, we're really excited, personally, for the opportunity for Sarah Beth to graduate with, with some work, little bit of work through the summer with a two-year degree coming out of Swain County High School. We don't have to enroll her into an early college, we don't have to send her to the School of Math and Science. We're going to be able to keep her here in Swain County Schools and let her participate in all the extracurricular activities. Our band program is what she loves, so, and tracks, so, you know, that is a huge benefit for our, our community.
Excellent.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Sutton, very much. I'd like to mention that Barbara Sneed is a director also, and she lives in a place that kind of bridges the gap between the high school and the central office because she kind of lives at the high school and works a lot with high school folks, but she really is the director of the CTE program. And so, Barbara, I apologize, I was, was having a real brain malfunction at that point. She's going to talk to us about the CTE plan.
Yeah. Chief of others, I've told many times, Mr. Sale, with her personality, her smile, and her show of love for kids and the things she does, I've always felt like that's, those are the real folks that have kids.
Oh, I can tell you that Barbara does, she always has.
I mean, that, you can't fail with that kind of care for kids, so I'm right going every time, chance I get, so.
Thank you.
And, and all of you.
So, this is my first year as the CTE director, and it has been a very challenging year learning the job, but it's been amazing and I love it, so I do thank the board for that opportunity to let me change into a different role. But I want to talk a little bit about the CLNA, which is something that we have to do in CTE every two years. It's relatively new, and it's the Comprehensive Learning Needs Assessment, and I believe that you received a form in your packets prior to this with more in-depth information in it, if you would like to go to that link. But on the form that I've given you, this infographic here, I'm spotlighting some things, and I'm also mentioning some areas of improvement that I'm going to go over with you. But why is CTE so important? It's basically for career awareness, and CTE goes all the way down into fifth grade. So, while we are funded from eighth grade to 12th grade, we actually go into fifth grade with career awareness, and then our electives extend into sixth and seventh as well. And currently, the lobbyists in CTE are fighting for funding that would go down to sixth and seventh grade, and I'm not going to say it's going to happen in the next year, but I definitely think it'll happen, which will expand opportunities for our students in the middle school especially. So, we're very excited about the potential for that over the next few years. CTE is career awareness, it brings leadership skills to students, valuable experiences inside and outside of the classroom, it can get you college credits, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that, and you can also gain credentials in classes that can help you be successful out in the workforce as well as college. Some program updates we have, we have finished the barn, and we hope to have an open house for that in the near future, and we recently sold our greenhouse, and it has all been picked up, and it's gone off of our campus, the older greenhouse, because the new road construction that's going to be come through there, that had to be relocated. So, our new greenhouse is up and it's near completion. We still have some things that we need to do, but it is hopefully going to be up and going for the fall, and we're really excited about that. When you look at our demographics in CTE, we had 302 students take middle school CTE classes, and that's with two teachers at the middle school. So, that is, that's a really high number, and as well, at the high school, we had 440 students participate in CTE classes this year, so we were really excited about that. Currently, we have the two middle school teachers and eight high school teachers, and we have three teachers on our campus that are SEC instructors, and we also help fund them as a school system, and those three are the carpentry, welding, and automotive classes, and they gain college credits for those. We consider those three guys and those classes one of ours. We, we don't, I don't ever even consider them SEC, but I did break it out on this just so you could see that they do a tremendous amount of work for, for our program and really recruit students, so it's, it's great. We also have a part-time administrative assistant, Jessica Holder, who I would have not been able to do my job with if I hadn't had her this year, and I always put in a plug with Mr. Sale because I would love for her to be full-time, and Stephanie. So, just want to put that out there, she is great and has really helped me this year. So, things that we're doing great and hopefully will continue to be great for the next year, we've got 13 pathways right now, and we're expanding into hospitality and tourism, and we recently hired a new position for that at the high school, Matt Smith, he'll be joining us in the fall. We stole him from the middle school, kind of, so, sorry, Mr. Kerr. Also, we have strong community partnerships. We have Gear Up, which I think Dr. Sutton mentioned earlier. We also have a very strong auto advisory board and a business advisory board that's comprised of people within our community and in our regional area, and we have strong ties with workforce development, and we've got some really great things coming up next year. We're going to bring back Construction Day, which is a regional event that is held in Haywood County, and our students loved it. We did this pre-COVID, and we're going to be bringing it back where we're going to bus students over there, and they'll get to participate in that, those that want to participate, but that's going to be a spring event next year that we're looking forward to, and that's a project that workforce development is kind of heading up with all of the regional directors, so we're really excited about that. Another thing I want to talk about is post-secondary placements. We have a concentrator, a CTE concentrator, feedback every year, a survey that we do with our students who've graduated, and we're always really high, I believe we're, the state requirement's 75%, and we're always around 90% that we actually hear back from, and they are at work, they are in college, they are in placements, so we're like, that's great news to hear. This year, with student credentials, we had 423 credentials earned. Now, that's not 423 students, some students have earned multiple credentials. For instance, in healthcare, it could have been a CPR and a stop-the-bleed credential, it could be an AED credential, so it just depends on which courses they're in, but they are earning credentials that they could go straight into the workforce with, and we're really excited to hear that. Our CTE concentrator's cohort graduation rate is always really high, and that just basically means that if you're a CTE concentrator, and that means you've taken at least two classes in CTE, with one being an advanced class such as Foods II, Carpentry II, Health Science II, Biomedical Drafting II, Adobe Video, any of those courses, that they are graduating on time, and we are well above the state average. We're in the 95 percentile, and our benchmark's 97, so we are working for that as well. Another thing that I think I've talked about to the school board is our PLCs that we have every two weeks during the school year. Our CTE group at the middle school and high school both join together, and we work on employability skills. So, while everybody has their own different curriculum, whether it's automotive, welding, health science, drafting, we all come together and we work on employability skills for our students because we've talked to the community and our business partners, and that's what they say our students are lacking. They're lacking the soft skills, the durable skills, and we're working on that at the high school. We are, our main focus is on task, so what does on task look like in health science versus what does on task look like in welding? And we're talking about safety, we're talking about communication, and we're having a 30, 60, and 90-day evaluation with all of our students in the CTE classes. And this is basically an individual one-on-one conference where, where some of our teachers are even going as far as to say, if you were my employee, I would fire you at the 30-day. And they're telling them why and what they can do to improve, because in the real world, as we all know, we don't have these conversations where it's comfortable and you're just going to get to come back to work the next day. You're potentially going to lose your job, or you're going to injure yourself or somebody else. So, we're trying to talk to our students about that now to help prepare them for the real world. I also want to spotlight our four CTSOs, and that's our Career and Technical Student Organizations at the high school. We have clubs at the high school, and these four are phenomenal in CTE. We have clubs at the high school, and these four are phenomenal in CTE. We have Skills USA, we have FFA, we have HOSA, and we have FCC LA. And I've kind of spotlighted on the paper here some of our finalists. But we had a state winner in Carpentry Showcase who created a beautiful chair, and that was back in, competition was in April, I believe. Then we had 14 students that competed at the HOSA State. That was earlier this year. In FFA next week, we have a forestry team traveling, and we also have a parliamentary procedure team traveling and a student that has, is competing in prepared public speech. So we have several students next week even competing for this during their summer break. They're going for the week to the state convention. So we're really excited about that. And then for FCC LA, Ms. Nyra Franklin had a team that competed in the Junior Chef Competition where they made a chicken taco dish, and they placed second in the state. And we are going for gold next year. So watch out. We're coming. I also do want to do a little shout out here for Ms. Franklin. She teaches our Foods One and Foods Two courses, and she is our nominee for the NCAT CTE Teacher of the Year. And that is brand new at the state level. And she is competing with everybody else in the state. Every district got to nominate one CTE teacher. And she's competing for an award package that includes $5,000, professional development money, membership in professional organization, and instructional supplies for her classroom. So we wish her well, and the results for that come out in October. So we're excited about that. She's a team player and goes above and beyond for our students, and we are all very lucky to work alongside her. And then the last thing I want to mention are areas of improvement that we are going to begin to work on this year. We are measured in CTE by science and of course assessments, math and of course assessments in Math One and Math Three, and also English EOCs, which is English Two. And that's a relatively new thing for CTE. We have accountability measurements within each classroom at the state level, but we also now are measured on how your school performs. So we are going to work to collaborate with our core teachers and help to also bring up those scores. So that's what we're going to be tackling this year to try to bridge the gap there. We also heard back in one of our surveys about the CLNA that students and parents would like to know more information, verbal and nonverbal, about career awareness and the job search in the second level courses. So our teachers are going to work more on that, about letting them know what's out there in those specific fields if they're taking health science, what kind of job openings are out there, what they can possibly be making, how the interview process goes. So we are going to be talking more about employability within our classes as well. The very last thing on this infographic, which I'll also share electronically so that Kim and Travis have it as well, is a bitly at the bottom, and that is just pictures from throughout the year that we've added all during the year. And we will continue to use a bitly like that so that we can spotlight our programs. But great things going on in CTE, and be sure to check out our plan. And that's all I've got.
How'd the job fair go?
The job fair was really great. We had our first job fair this year, and we set it up during senior week, and we gave a specific time to underclassmen, and I think we gave them, I want to say 30 to 45 minutes. And we gave them information that they could leave the gym with on how to get a work permit because there's a gap there. Students don't know how to apply for a job. So even though they're in a year-long career management class where they're learning the skills, it's some of the logistics that parents and students don't understand. So they left with that in their hands, and they also got to go around and meet with, it was around 28 employers locally that came together. And they, the students loved it. So the underclassmen came first, and then the juniors and seniors came last. It was a hit all around. Now, we did have it open to the community in the afternoon, and we didn't have as much participation as we had hoped with the community. But next year, we're going to continue to do this as an annual event because we had great feedback from the businesses. I thought when, when we didn't have a lot of community members come to the job fair that they would be discouraged and not want to come next year. But we have received great feedback. They loved it. They want to come back. They want to come and see our kids individually. It was, it was a really great event. So, and I would encourage you guys to come check it out next year because it was really neat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, very, very much. You know, we use the phrase drinking from the fire hose sometimes to explain how difficult getting started can be for some positions. Michelle Heron, I'm not even sure the fire hose is big enough to describe what she has had the opportunity to learn, and she is still learning. Michelle is going to come and she's going to talk about food nutrition costs. What everyone is going to see, not only in Swain County but across the state, is an increase in breakfast and lunch cost. I saw a figure today that inflation for food is at 10%. That affects what we're going to be doing in our cafeterias. It will not affect the quality or the nutritional value, but it will have an impact on what it's going to cost students. Okay? Now, Michelle is going to do the talking here, but you'll notice that there are some significant increases across the region and across the state. And at the end, we will ask for you to approve, if I'm not mistaken, a letter to support some of the next steps. So Michelle, with that, lead us on.
First of all, I need to talk about my bid process, too. Swain County Schools is a member of the North Carolina Procurement Alliance, and they've awarded Fort Mill, U.S. Foods in Fort Mill, South Carolina, the bid. And this will be our fourth year renewing this bid. We are able to renew it for four years. And then for the dairy bid, I recommend us going with pet dairy again. This will be year two out of four. And then for our chemical correction enterprises, I will recommend that we take the option to renew the bid with them. The original bid was in 2020, 2021, and this will be the second year out of four to go with them again. I just need y'all to say that that's okay, that I can do the process that we've been doing for years.
So will you need that approval tonight?
Yes, sir.
And Stephanie, will, will our board be able just to approve that by voice vote in our action items?
I would say so. When do you have to have it approved? Because we do have another meeting on the 29th. If we do want to write that up into a formal motion, we'll do it on the 29th.
Will that, will that meet your deadlines?
That'll work.
Then let's, let's work together and write that into a more formalized process so that our board can look at it ahead of time?
Okay.
And then we'll get that approved on that night.
Okay. And the second thing, I would recommend raising the breakfast and lunch prices. I am going to suggest raise the breakfast prices to 260 and the lunch prices to 375. And I know that that's a big jump, but with a lot of my supplies, they're jumping, they're quadrupling in price. They're telling me one day that they don't have the items, the next day I can get them for four times as much. And then the wage increase that we just had, some of my workers really benefited from that, and they deserve to benefit from that. Some of those increases were from 2.5% to 36% by the time July 1 rolls around. So it will be hard to keep up with those costs. But I'm in line, what I'm asking for is in line with all the counties around me. If you'll see on your form, the breakfast is right in with Jackson County. My lunches, Buncombe County's at 375 to 425. Haywood County's asking 375. Henderson County is going for 375. Pennsylvania County's at 350. Cherokee County is at 375. Clay County's at 350. Graham County's at 360. Jackson County's asking for 375. Macon County's going to 385, and I'm asking for 375 to be approved.
And again, we will, we will need that to be approved this evening?
Yes, sir.
If we were, again, to wait until June 29th, would that be a concern for you, or do we need to move on that tonight?
I need to put it into a document for the free and reduced applications for the state to approve, I mean to actually send out on July 1.
So that needs to happen tonight?
That does.
Okay, so we will add that then as an action item after we get back, if we should happen to go to closed session or after personnel, okay?
And I realize that that's going to be a hardship on families. For me myself to pay for my three kids to have lunch is going to be $56 a week. But everything's going up, so I can't do it without the rise in the lunch prices.
But we've received some support as well, correct, Michelle?
We have, we have, we are being able to get the CEP for West Elementary, which theirs will be free for breakfast and lunch.
West Elementary will be?
West Elementary, yes. And on the free and reduced end, they are going to include Medicaid recipients this year, which they've not done that before. So that will help a lot of.
So that should enlarge the number of students across the board, across all grade levels that will be able to receive free or reduced, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so that, that's one help. And also, the tribe still supports students who are enrolled and pays for their breakfast and lunch as well. And Michelle works with them to make sure that those, those numbers are accurate. Okay? So there is help there. So I heard you say just a few minutes ago, Michelle, that the, the request then to vote on will be 260 for breakfast for full price, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then 375 for lunch for full price, and then reduced would be built from there?
Reduced lunch will be 40 cents, and reduced breakfast is free.
And so it might be a good idea for us this year to have an extra push, Toby. It might be a good idea for us to push to encourage families to apply. Sometimes families are reluctant to apply for free and reduced. Perhaps it makes them feel self-conscious. But if we can reduce the cost of something to 40 cents from 375, I think that that's a valuable opportunity for parents. And when they fill those applications out, they're confidential.
Yes.
Aren't they? As, as a matter of fact, we can't know who receives free and reduced. That would be, be wonderful information for us to have in our, in our data collection. But we can't know. We have to go to Michelle and say, these students, what percent are free and reduced? We can't know by name.
Yep. And also, these families are not used to filling out the application since COVID. They didn't have to. But since the waiver's not passed, they'll have to fill these applications out again this year.
So will that be hard copy or digital?
Hopefully, they will do it digitally, but we will have a hard copy, too.
Okay.
They're able to go onto our new Titan website and fill it in.
So as we, can they do that now, or do they need to wait till after July?
They'll have to wait till after July 1.
Okay. So we can begin to publicize that then?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Very good. What other information do you need these young men and lady to know?
Please approve it and make my job easier?
Travis?
Yes, one of the things that have brought me is maybe looking at, especially our high school kids, maybe getting as far as the quantity or the amount of food that they are getting. Seems like it's matching up with elementary kids, and maybe we should look at high school kids maybe getting a little more.
Their serving sizes are a little bit different, but we go by what we are able to be reimbursed for. We have to, we have guidelines that are set for the quantity that they receive.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is that the portion sizes at the high school are regulated?
By the USDA.
By the USDA. Is there, is there any avenue that we have?
They are able to purchase extra. An extra entree is $2 right now. I've really not looked into increasing those prices. I probably should. I've just not been able to get around to that one yet.
Okay, so, so why don't you and I take the opportunity to look at ways that perhaps we can address that? And Travis, we'll come back to you at the July meeting and tell you what we've discovered and see if we can perhaps address that concern. That's been a concern since I've been at the high school as principal, too. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Treadway is going to take us through several things, budget amendments. Then she's going to talk about a continuing budget resolution because we have to, we're at the end of our budget year right now, and we need to be able to start operating July 1st. And yet we still don't have a budget from the state, and who knows what the feds are going to do. And then we have insurance contracts. So Stephanie?
Yes, so for budget amendments for tonight, I don't have a lot of activity. Mostly this time of the year, it is just moving expenditures between purpose codes just based on where the funds are needed and spent. So on the state public school fund, there was an overall increase of $64,962. $28,412 of that, most of that was for transportation, and that was for some contingency funds. With transportation, as you all know, the increase in fuel has created an additional cost for us for, for the yellow bus transportation. And of the 28,000, we had $10,190 in additional fuel allotments that the state provided. And then we also had $18,173 in allotments for some repairs, some major repairs that we had to have for some buses. We also have another request to the state of $16,849 for increase in fuel. So that's a total of about $27,000 since February in increased fuel cost. The other amount for the state public school fund were, was $36,550, and that was for some textbook allotment. That was actually a transfer from some of our reserves. We're allowed to use state textbook allotment funds for digital and other instructional material that we might need in lieu of state textbooks, since there's limited to zero state textbooks. So there was a transfer of $36,550 for it. The local current expense fund, there were no amendments to that. I think I mentioned to you before, as we get to the end of the year, we are about $110,000 over in local current expense on our utilities. So we're having to move some of that off to our, to Fund Eight. And so that, as of the end of May, I moved 110,000 off to Fund Eight for the additional cost. And that's standard. We always budget for that in our Fund Eight for any excess. Federal Grant Fund, we had an increase of 1.2 million. The majority of that was from PRC 181, which was ESTER III funds, which we actually got that additional allotment in January. And because of the way we did the budget resolution to begin with, and when that amendment hit, I failed to get it into our packet at that particular time and found that as I was going through all of our budgets. So the majority of that is for ESTER III, which you So, um, so the majority of that is for, um, ESTER III, which you had already approved the total of our plan, which was about three point three million. And the rest of, um, the amendments for federal grants was just moving between purpose codes. On capital outlay, we had an increase of seventy-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um, that was completely from the additional amount that the county paid, um, for the high school addition. Um, I received the total of what they had paid to date, um, with the pave, the extra paving, and, um, the last and final payment to the contractors. And so, um, there's an additional seventy-four thousand over and above what I had already budgeted, which was about a hundred thousand. Um, child nutrition, I have no amendments for child nutrition for this month. And then in Fund Eight, which is our special revenue fund, there was an increase of about forty thousand dollars, and that was for Gear Up. Um, they basically combined, we have, um, two grant years this year, so it was, um, a portion of, um, Grant Year One, uh, forty thousand, and then, um, the remainder of what we have will actually carry us through the end of September and next year. So we basically have about, um, fifteen months worth of budget in Gear Up, so. And the remainder of that is just moving between purpose codes. And that's all I have for budget amendments. Um, we'll have the additional meeting the twenty-ninth, um, of June, just so that we can finalize any additional amendments that we might need for the year, so.
Questions? Continuing resolution?
Okay, so, um, as we do each year, um, we do pass a continuing resolution for the next fiscal year. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, I'll just read this. The Swain County Board of Education authorizes interim appropriations at the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two level for the purposes of paying salaries and the usual ordinary expenses of Swain County schools for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, until the adoption of a new budget resolution. Interim appropriations so made and expended shall be charged to the proper appropriations in the budget resolution. So we're asking for this approval, um, in order for us to continue to pay, um, bills and payroll in the early months of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, until we receive our final allotments from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and finalize our state, local, and federal budgets for the new year. So we are operating on a biennial budget for the state, so, um, we won't have the delay that we had last year. Um, however, we'll just wait for those final allotments from the state and then finalize our budget for the new year.
That resolution was included in your digital files. Do you want us to get, uh, a print copy of that for you to look at tonight? We good? Okay. And insurance?
So for just the, um, for insurance, um, every year, we have to have our, um, insurance agreements signed by the board chair. Um, we obtain our insurance through the North Carolina School Board Trust um, for both, um, for errors and omissions and general liability, for auto, um, liability, and for, um, property damage, and for workers' comp. So, um, the North Carolina School Board Trust is more of an agreement and not really an insurance contract, so therefore, it's not a waiver of our governmental immunity. Um, and it also doesn't duplicate any state, um, liability insurance that we would have. So it kinda works hand in hand with the, um, the state, um, insurance program that we would be covered by as well. Um, workers' comp, um, is just for our local and federal, um, paid employees as the state provides workers' comp for state-paid employees, so. But, um, our coverage limits are the same as in previous years, and it's just a renewal of our existing contracts.
Questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Toby Burrell has asked to, uh, debrief us on the shooting that happened in Texas, um, because there's some information that's come out of that that we can all learn from. Uh, he's requested to have a few minutes in, in open session to talk about the appropriate items. And then he has asked, um, also for us to go to closed session and to discuss some other pieces that had to do with safety plans, uh, here in Swain County. And the reason that we would both like that to be closed session is because there are elements of our safety plan that need to remain confidential. And, uh, that is one of the reasons that we are allowed to speak in closed session, okay? So Toby, if you'll get us started, and then we'll ask our board to, uh, approve closed session after that.
Yeah, I'm not real sure where, uh, to start at, other than to let you know as a board that, uh, in the coming weeks, I'm gonna convene with, uh, a task force and talk about our safety plans again and take a look at them in detail with law enforcement, safety personnel. Uh, we're gonna meet with our principals and assistant principals in the coming weeks as well to talk about issues at the schools and what we can do to safeguard our schools better. Um, it's important for you as a board to know that this is never something that we rest on our laurels about. We're continuously studying whatever's going on anywhere else. Uh, we've looked very carefully at Uvalde and the tragedy that happened there, and importantly, how it relates to us and how we can maintain safety in our schools. It is worth note that the folks at Robb Elementary School had a plan, uh, for that day, and for whatever reasons it be, the plan didn't work. And so that causes great concern for me as a safety director, that we need to look at our plans and be diligent with those plans. I know that with COVID going on, we, we didn't relax our safety plans, but we didn't study them maybe the way we should have over those years. So we're gonna dive back in headfirst and make sure that we, uh, do our due diligence on that. And I think as a suggestion to you as a board, that it would be a good idea to have me back when that is concluded and report our findings to you, so that you're on board and know what we've talked about and what's going on. Is that enough, or do you want? That's totally up to you. We've, we've talked about, you and I have these issues, so if there's any that you feel we need to bring out, I trust your judgment more so than mine.
Now, one of the things that Toby has recommended is that we, we send a, a letter, um, to our representatives in Robb, and we ask that funding, which has traditionally been allotted by grant, be placed into a regular, um, annual allotment. And one of the reasons for that is there is more and more interest from, um, public schools in applying for the grant, for which we receive funding for SROs. And that's gonna become more and more competitive. And so we have, Toby and I have constructed a letter, and we've placed it in your documentation that, uh, we would like for you to look at and then, uh, give approval of or give suggestions of how to change, so that we can go ahead and send that, uh, to Senator, I mean, to Representative Clampett and to Senator Corbin, um, asking that this be a regular allotment rather than a competitive grant program. Toby's already mentioned the fact that we're going to, he's going to put together a task force. Um, and there are some other, uh, concerns that Toby has that, that we need to continue to look at, uh, our locking system. One of the things that we've found out, or they found out at Robb Elementary School is that there were, there were some locks on some doors that were not functioning correctly. Um, and, uh, we continue to have that problem because they're locks and they break. Um, and so Toby is suggesting that we continue to look at that and even upgrading and get to the point where we truly have a digital lock on every door. That is an expensive endeavor.
Even if we have to do that piecemeal, I think it's worth taking a long, hard look at.
Uh, we have, we've made some significant steps forward with our surveillance system at both the, uh, the high school and the middle school, um, by using a company named Verkata. Uh, Toby, and I'm sure that Brandon Messer and the principals would also recommend that we look at what it would cost and if we could implement that at the elementary schools. That is not a, an inexpensive undertaking though. Um, because there's not only an upfront cost of putting in the cameras, but there's also, uh, a yearly cost for monitoring the cameras, because they're not just monitored by us. Um, there is some cloud work that's, that's, um, undertaken as well for storage, uh, for video storage. And so Toby's gonna get some numbers, and he's gonna bring them back to us. And again, that probably is gonna have to be something that we look at doing a piece at a time. And we need to be very careful, because when you commit to that, you're committing to an annual cost. Um, and we have to think about how we can pay for that, okay? Those are the big recommendations that Toby wants to bring to you all.
And if I could interject, Mr. Superintendent, I think the, the biggest thing about the Verkata system is that is something that's a non-recurring cost for safety grant purposes that we could apply for the, the original equipment. It would be incumbent upon us as a system to absorb those recurring costs, though, for those elementary schools, tacked on to what we're already paying for the high school and middle school. So there may be a way we can get part of that offset.
So let us bring you those numbers, and we'll look at them hopefully in July, okay?
Our road's still attractive. Be built, isn't it?
Uh, we're supposed to start in a couple of weeks, is my understanding. First, supposed, supposed to be completed, um, in September?
Yeah, the shooting for the first of October.
Okay.
Of September.
Okay.
And I think we talked at the time, I've got to look at the gate gates on one of those, or we lost that campus.
That, that, that's part of the plan. Um, there are some logistics pieces that we have to think about with that as well. Right now, the request, the thought is that we have a three-gate system, um, so that we can truly keep, uh, vehicles and unauthorized individuals off the backside of the campus, and their only point of entrance will be at that front door. Okay, now that, that creates a level of concern, because what if we need to evacuate? There are pieces that we have to put in place, but that would be something that this committee would look at as well. We can afford to have the gates made, that's not a problem. It's the logistics of how's it gonna work.
And for, it's very middle school concept, that's what I liked about it. We put a middle school back anywhere, but putting it on that high school campus puts all, yeah, doubles our security.
Yes.
You've got two schools, and I think we can improve on that, and that, that, that's another positive thing for that middle school.
Yes.
Concept. We're on the right track, but heaven forbid something like that happened. We'll, we'll blame ourselves the rest of our lives for not doing enough. Uh, that's one of the kind of things, hopefully not.
And I like the, the fact that Toby is, is recommending he's going to put together a committee to look at this. Um, and, uh, Jerry, you and I had had a conversation about, do we bring in a, uh, a professional consulting group to look at this with us as well? Uh, we've got some folks who are gonna be on that team, who, if they believe that's best, will certainly make that recommendation. And then we'll look at that.
That's a good thing, that's, uh, and I appreciate you doing that, that's, that's neat. Thank you.
So I believe that Toby would like to take us to, to closed session, or he would like to talk to us some more, and there are some other elements that we need to, to converse about as well. All right.
I'm making mention we go into closed session.
All right, we have a second. I'll refer you by an aye.
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 Aye. Comment to the, those out there and, and the audience? We go into closed session only for confidential, uh, problems, confidential, uh, might be personnel, or student affairs, or something that we cannot share outside. We don't do anything else other than that's something that's totally within the law. And it's very strict as to what we can do. So we appreciate your allowing us to leave for a while.
Thank you.
Let's call the meeting back to order. Mr. Self, if you would, please.
Let's, um, Mr. McKinney, before we do that, just to make sure that we're following policy. Um, Kim, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Travis, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. That takes us to action items. Uh, Mr. McKinney, I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the resignation of Colby Hyatt as CTE teacher at Swain Middle School effective June 6, 2022. And please remember, Mr. McKinney, that we need to have voice votes on these, okay?
I was gonna remind them. All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
And second, all right?
Second.
And all those in favor, by an aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the resignation of Susanna Montane as teacher at Swain Middle School effective June 6, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All right, in discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, all right, motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the resignation of Diane Tuck as bus driver effective May 27, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
All right, in discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
An aye for me, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the resignation of Eric Stevenson as teacher at Swain High School effective June 6, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I myself, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the resignation of Cody Tisotewski as teacher assistant at Swain East Elementary effective June 6, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I myself, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Valerie Faith Dillard as teacher at Swain High School effective August 15, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I myself, carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Cassie M. Phillips as teacher at Swain East Elementary effective August 15, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
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 And I myself, carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Dustin McAbey as alternative learning teacher at Swain High School effective August 15, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, myself, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Deborah Taylor as teacher at Swain Middle School effective August 15, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
All right, I myself, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Sandra English as STEM camp lead teacher effective June 28, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, myself, aye, carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Jessica Masters as summer credit recovery teacher for ninth through 12th grade effective June 27, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I myself, carried.
Who did we just vote on?
Jessica Masters.
Jessica Masters.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Regina Parks as EC teacher assistant at Swain West Elementary effective August 15, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All right, I myself, carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Mathias Palmer as EC teacher assistant at Bright Adventures Pre-K effective August 15, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
And I myself, it's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Michael Coldcord, part-time custodian at the central office.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All right, I myself, carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Malina Thompson as speech language pathologist at Swain West Elementary effective August 15, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
And I myself, carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Edwin West as project supervisor for the maintenance department effective July 5, 2022. Four-year-hauls record, that's the first employment for the small project team that we've been talking about, okay?
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I myself, carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Carolyn Easterly as teaching and learning coach effective August 15, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I myself, carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Vincent Bradley as middle school boys' basketball head coach effective July 1, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
I recommend that-
Was that a aye or a plan? Kim, did you say aye?
Bless you.
I did.
Okay, all right, then I also, so that's carried.
I recommend that Swain County Board of Education employ Mathias Palmer as middle school girls' basketball head coach effective July 1, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All right, in discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Steven Jamison as middle school girls' basketball assistant coach effective July 1, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, myself, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Jonathan Cook as middle school boys' cross-country track coach effective July 1, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I myself, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Megan Lucas as middle school boys' track coach effective July 1, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Kim, was that an aye?
Yes, aye.
I think she's raising a man, too. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education grant a one-year leave of absence request for Linay Watson for the 2022-2023 school year.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
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 All right, I myself, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the CTE local application as presented by Ms. Sneed.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
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 And I also, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the budget amendments as presented by Ms. Tredway.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
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 All right, I also move, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the 2022-2023 continuing budget resolution as presented by Ms. Tredway.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
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 All right, myself, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the 2022-2023 insurance contracts as presented.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, myself, that's carried.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the AIG plan as presented by Dr. Sutton. That's not on your agenda, but we need to approve that, please.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and myself, that's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve breakfast prices of $2.60 for full pay. $2. You misspoke. Okay, let's start again. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the breakfast breakfast price of $2 for full pay and $3.75 for lunch full pay for the 2022-2023 school year.
Motion.
Second.
In discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, myself, that's carried.
Michelle, is there anything else that you need to have approved this evening? Anything? Okay, all right. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the consent agenda, including the mask approval and the May 9, 2022 minutes for both closed and open sessions.
So moved.
Second.
One question, the mask approval stays the same, that's right?
Mask approval stays the same, and if the Lord's willing, this will be the last time you have to hear about it.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor by aye?
Aye.
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 All right, and myself, that's carried.
Those are all of the action items that I know about. Those are all of the action items that I know about. Anything else? We good? Okay. You have June calendar events. You can see there that July 4 is a holiday. Your next meeting is June the 29th. That's for a closeout. Uh, there may be a couple of other things that we need to look at and take care of at that point, but it's pretty critical that we take care of that for the end of our budget year. You see that there are some transfers. Krista Reynolds is moving from east to the middle school. Angela Barnes from the high school to the middle school. Karen Melvin from west to east. Um, in July, it is, um, your responsibility to complete an evaluation for me. Uh, I placed that in your, your digital files. However, I will confess to you, um, you probably are going to need a magnifying glass to see it.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And so I will work on getting that enlarged for all of you, but we need to take care of that in July, please.
Now, do you have individual ones for them? This one has a composite. They're going to have to have a-
I gave them each that in the, in their files.
Okay.
But I will get them individual copies when I enlarge it, because they're going to want that.
Right.
Yes, sir. And Mr. McKinney, to my knowledge, unless somebody tells me that I've forgotten something. Joanne, have we forgotten anything? I believe that that's all the business for this evening.
That's enough. Do I have a motion? The meeting adjourned.
Motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All right, and myself, that we're adjourned.
Thank you, Travis, and, um, Kim, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get things signed. Is there anything else that needs to be signed?